Okay, welcome everybody to the town board work session. On Tuesday, February 6th, 2018, the time is 7:45 PM.
Somewhere.
Somewhere.
Exactly.
One zone over in California.
So um so assuming this here, so we're just gonna begin to jump around a little bit and just gonna talk about two things first. One is the proposed local law amending the zoning code. Section sixteen dash four thirty oh eight with regard to the off-street parking requirements and then also Hudson Wellness. Okay?
Go. Um real quickly, so um I had proposed to you, working with council, a change to the zoning code. As you know, we're always trying to streamline and clarify things in the code. Um right now, under group instruction, there's a specific call out to the planning board to review parking requirements. Many times, the group instruction category falls under the purview of the zoning board. So rather than naming the planning board as a second board if somebody is before the zoning board, we want to change the requirement to say to be the parking to be authorized by the board that is reviewing the application. Um so this is something um that is that you have before you as a as a code change. And it's not taking away the planning board's authority. It is allowing the approving board, whether it be zoning board or planning board, to review the parking for group instruction as recommended by staff. And in either case, staff will make a recommendation and the boards will either agree or disagree with it.
Other than efficiency, if you can refresh my recollection, tell me, is there anything else that's prompting this that is foreseeable in the immediate future or that we think may?
There is an application currently right now before the zoning board for a variance to allow group instruction in an existing structure. It has nothing to do with the planning board's authority as far as site plan or any environmental permitting. So this applicant would need to leave the zoning board, go through the planning board process, and then go back to the zoning board.
And is it relevant at this point, if at all, to ask who that applicant is and for what? Is that a fair reasonable question, council?
I mean, it's point of information. It doesn't, I don't think it.
Doesn't affect the change.
Doesn't affect your change, but sure, it's a fair question.
So who would, yeah.
It is Fiddlehead's Cooking Studio. They want to um convert an existing garage into a studio to teach cooking classes to children.
That's cool.
How dare they?
But you weren't expecting that answer.
Yeah, that's right.
This is my question. Um the planning board has different expertise than the zoning board would. So I get while it maybe some, we don't wanna impose an additional requirement on an applicant to have to go before two boards, but I would say that if we were gonna consider changing this, I would at least wanna make sure the planning board eve- at least informally reviewed parking changes because their views on how things should be structured may be different from the zoning board.
This is about the number of parking spaces? This isn't about a site planning issue?
Uh huh.
Uh you know, the.
So it's an uh uh it's occupancy, there's a there's a formula?
Uh there 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 is a formula. It's making sure that there's adequate parking and traffic circulation, which is typically conducted by an engineer providing turning radii on a property.
Right.
It's not about where the parking should be.
If it becomes, if if there isn't adequate parking, so there isn't an adequate number of parking spots and they need to expand their driveway and they.
Right, so.
Then they don't get their permit. If they need to expand their driveway and create more impervious area.
Right. Yeah.
Then it will be identified and the applicant will need to do that.
So with, so like for example.
It will be identified by. By the by staff with the zoning board. But then it go to the planning board?
No, so so for a bank or a restaurant as an example, there's a set number of spaces per square feet of retail, per number of restaurant seats. For the group instruction use, it depends upon the group instruction as to how many parking spaces you need to have.
Correct.
And so that's why in the code, it says the planning board in this case would authorize how many and determine how many spaces there are on a case-by-case basis.
And so we're saying that that.
It's the number of spaces.
It's very similar to the change you just made for special use permits that are not one of the listed uses in the code. You have a a segment that says a a use that comes in that doesn't fit into one of these categories. The parking is a derivation of the uses on-site as recommended by professional staff to the reviewing board. You just made that change to the code, I think at the end of last year. This is the same thing essentially, so so for example, this is group instruction for a school for young children. The 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 zoning board has set a limitation on the number of students and the hours of operation. She can't have any more than five students in a cooking class. So i- if you do the math of the five students, if they're brought by one parent, that's five spots. In her, in the five spots that need to be able to park, not infringe upon the primary use in the house, and they need adequate circulation and then there has to be adequate emergency circulation. So there's standards that engineering uses to ensure that the driveway is wide enough, that the turning radius can be completed appropriately and safely, and that there's area enough for these cars to be parked. And those are the standards that the zoning board will use to approve this special permit. And you know, one of those qualifiers will be the number of parking spaces. But the zoning board isn't necessarily determining the parking spaces or where the parking spaces should be without staff and professionals providing them the details on how it can be configured on the site.
So it may believe they say we need six and you can't, the space can't fit six and they.
Then they would reduce the occupancy, the allowable occupancy per class.
Or they'd have to find a place to put six parking spots.
Correct.
Or sit it there.
Or bring in the planning board?
Well, well, it well, it depending on how much earth moving and the the code triggering to then send it to the planning board. And as a special permit, it is referred oftentimes to the other boards.
Would Nick, would it be something that we would say, well, that is, this is a good, this is a good legislation,
Right.
other than where it exceeds, you know, a certain size?
You could, you could say for less than X number of spaces, just to determine by the reviewing board.
So then we see that trouble, so the department can't come in and say, okay, strip other.
We want fifty.
Authorities from having authority, you know, strip strip other boards from having authority.
Right, so if for group instructions where more than X number of spaces are required, it's staged with a reviewing board. Other than that, then you need to get to the planning board.
I think that's more reasonable, at least protects us, it doesn't go wholesale usage in the event that somebody.
Well, it also, it maintains your, I, cause I think what I'm hearing from you is you're concerned about more site planning issues and that's better seated situated with the planning board.
Right. Yes.
So I think that that answer of the number of spaces may be kind of your threshold.
Yeah, I think that's more reasonable.
I actually don't know if that's a threshold because I the concept is, but you could have a huge property and if you're only adding, let's say, ten spaces to the limit, that may not be an issue, but if it's a small property and it's eight spaces that don't fit, like it should be a percentage of either the area or where parking can currently fit. Do you know what I'm saying? If the if you're doing a numerical space, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten might not be an issue on a giant property, but less than that could be an issue on a small property where there wouldn't necessitate site plan approval or other changes. So to me, it should be based on either a, well, not a percentage, but a allowable area for parking.
My my issue is that we're talking about making a change with like, let's say, the planning board and the ZBA. You know, what what roles they have. And act like I'm personally being concerned that if we're gonna take away a something that the planning board traditionally does, then they may be upset by that. I would I would like to, I would like to hear the opinions of the planning board and the ZBA. These are the people that are involved in these applications and and they're the ones who could tell us, yes, for efficiency purposes or for whatever reasons, that's that's the good approach.
So once you introduce a local law before you and before you can vote on it, you do need to refer to the planning board for a report and recommendation. We can sometimes send it in.
But I wouldn't even want, I wouldn't even wanna do it until I know that they're on board with it.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah.
So you could send it to them informally now, just so we can hear the comment.
Right. Yeah.
Right, like I wanna hear their feedback because we're basically talking about taking away responsibilities, getting responsibilities, and we need to know how they feel about that.
Right.
But but I do, I do agree that we need to be more efficient. I just, my concern, the voice, my concern is is what happens on the east end with Rose Hill potentially or maybe on at some of the new hills.
Those are site plan projects?
But just in general, just large develop developments um and.
However, you want to.
Maybe the way to word it is if any site plan changes have to be made.
This is just for.
Right.
I mean, that it'd be too.
But they they.
Sabrina.
It would be the best one, so it's gonna be like.
But this is like, that's just a limit.
Maybe, yeah, yeah.
But that deal with the construction.
Yeah.
Sabrina.
I'm sorry.
Maybe the way to say it is that if any changes to the site plan need to be made, that then it needs to be referred to the planning board.
Yeah, well, he he here's.
Right.
Absolutely, I I want you to understand, Rose Hill wouldn't, this discussion would never come up with Rose Hill because as a special permit, that is under the authority of the, there's authority under the, under site plan review by a planning board already. So those are big changes in use. This is for group instruction, it's limited in the code. It's group instruction, which fits into a specific definition and it's limited to no more than five pupils.
So the class can only have five at a time, could have four classes a day, but only five students at a time.
It's only a two-minute specific thing.
Yeah, it's a very narrow.
Right. Very narrow.
Activity.
But but you could still require site plan changes, right? If you needed to expand the size.
Right, which would then go before the planning board.
So it's still triggered the planning board regardless.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess Lisa's point is can we build that into the local law?
Yeah, I agree.
Like, and if long as it doesn't trigger site plan approval, in which case it would have to be referred to the planning board.
Sure.
Right, absolutely, we can, we can only, which it does that.
But that wasn't clear to me either when I read it, yeah.
And if this is for this one, one applicant.
It's.
It's not.
Well, it's not if you're changing the code.
It's not this one. I understand, but it seems like we're doing it for that one applicant.
No, the one applicant is what triggered our awareness that we should, there's opportunities to streamline.
No, not.
That there's a problem.
Because we, because and and primarily because we changed the category, other, if it's not listed, that the other change you made to the parking code where it didn't fit. And so this was again, this was an area that we should have changed previously to be consistent with the direction that we're going in, which is giving the board that's reviewing the application and reviewing all aspects of the application, the authority to determine the parking.
Okay.
So so again, it's not intended to limit any board's approval authority whatsoever.
But you know what, I I just wanna pull something out of the code and make, I believe all special use permits are referred to the planning board anyway for an important recommendation.
Right, so so it was referred.
So before the ZBA could grant them the special use permit, it gets referred to the planning board anyway. So how are we making this efficient for the more efficient?
Because the referral does, the referral is an internal um administrative process versus making in making an application, establishing application fees, escrow fees, and getting agendized.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So the planning board's gonna see this one way or the other. So the question is, if you're concerned just making sure you get input from the planning board? That occurs because the special use permit gets referred to them. So what we can do is build in here that ultimately the approval board has the ultimate decision, making the determinations to the number of spaces, but they must get a specific recommendation from the planning board. So that in addition to the.
It's site plan approval.
No, no, no.
In in all cases.
Or just in all cases. So so this application will come before the zoning board. As a special permit, it's referred to the architectural review board and the planning board. When it is referred, the referral comes from the board to that board. Staff provide their description and their requirements for the application and we call out for the referral boards items that we would like them to consider. And so in this case, we can say the, you know, they're they're looking at four classes a day, five parking spaces and you know, the specific characteristics of concern are this. We're recommending this number of parking spaces in these locations. Please provide your comments by this date.
So like recommended language, you could add is that in the case when the planning board does not make approval of authority, the planning board shall report back specifically to the ZBA with respect to the number of parking spaces.
Yeah.
Any words to that effect?
I'm good with that.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
And that addresses your concern to make sure that the planning board's eyes are on it.
Correct.
They're gonna look at it anyway, so let's call out that you, they need to make a specific recommendation as to the number of spaces.
Yeah, that's good. We don't wanna have to acquire more fees than that.
So we'll make that change, but we'll still follow Rob's recommendation to send it to them then for their.
So you could now. Well, we do that all, we do that regardless. Oh, we love that regardless.
Well, do you wanna send it to them before or you wanna send it to them as part of the referral?
The next date that the planning board will be able to discuss this is in March.
I mean.
Well, if we make this change, I don't think it's taking away anything from the planning board, so then I would be comfortable referring it over to them.
Right, so maybe we could set the public hearing for the um.
I agree, I think it's moving, it's moving forward.
Yeah.
We can move forward, I just don't want, I don't want that to feel like no um.
On the thirteenth, we will set a public hearing.
Call for it on the Thursday.
I want to explain that to them, I guess.
When I start, you start with.
I think they're just sending it out there.
Yeah.
No, just try to be efficient and we'll, let's do what we're gonna say.
Yeah.
No, it's only.
But can you send it to them informally now, say anything about this?
Yeah, and then we can.
Yeah.
I can say we're trying to get it to the ZBA as well.
And send it to the ZBA.
It would be nice.
Yeah, send it to the ZBA.
I just want their feedback.
We'll have a public hearing, we're trying to keep it moving, we're gonna schedule it.
Okay.
March six, yeah.
When is the? As soon as possible.
When's when does the planning board speak? March sixth, you said?
Yeah, March sixth.
The first Tuesday or.
No, it's March twenty, we have to.
Okay, the ZBA meets when?
The last.
Okay, so it's time.
The last Wednesday. So it's gonna be referred to the county planning?
The county planning board.
The zoning board and the.
Yes.
Especially if you don't have that much.
And and you know what, Christina, I'm gonna, I will send a memo to the ZBA and the planning board specifically regarding the change in parking.
Right, exactly, get your sugar tolerance higher.
It's like.
Get your. Concern about our internal delivery.
Not this.
Okay.
So you're gonna need to inform that you're referring to the ZBA and the planning board with something.
Okay, so I'll talk to you, yes, okay, until I get that.
Yeah, and I and I need the changes from there.
Where is okay, where is the prescriptions room?
Before we can refer it.
Okay, so maybe update it and then I can get the memo.
Nick is gonna provide changes, I'm gonna do a memo.
You can email it from me and then I can get the package out.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. So let's turn to Hudson Wellness.
Okay, so um Hudson Wellness, as you know, is a, is a, as you may or may not know, is a development that's occurring in Portland. Um it is composed, the property itself is composed of two properties, one in Newcastle and one in Portland. It is an existing built environment, there's existing structures on the property. The proposal in Portland is to do a wellness center for um, I wanna say, for for substance abuse.
Rehabilitation, right?
Rehabilitation.
Right, yeah.
Um for folks who suffer from substance abuse um on-site. Um I didn't bring all the stats of it, the town board, you've gotten information beforehand, but the property in Newcastle is to remain unbuilt, it will be deep restricted. Um when we boiled down all of the information, it was really traffic impacts and potentially groundwater impacts. Um the wells that are low, there's three wells located on-site, um they're having to dig new wells, so on and so forth. Portland's hydrogeologist is our hydrogeologist, William Canavan from HES. Um so what I had had conversations with Cortland and um and our consultant and he said that if I get authorization from Cortland, he'll give us all the information 'cause he's already reviewing it. Um he doesn't, there's no connection preliminarily to any wells in Newcastle right now. So the trace analyses that they have conducted, there's no direct connection to any wells in Newcastle, so we know that.
Does that that translate into taking water from, for lack of a better term, aquifer A, it's not gonna impact aqua- aquifer B?
Correct, as far as we can tell, yes. It's the best science available to determine any direct connections from a well on one site with the same aquifer with other wells.
And has he provided you that actual data in the sense that he may have to interpret it for us, but is he, or is it just?
The first submission by the applicant provided some information. The second submission, which we just received, provides additional information. More information is required. So so Cortland is managing this project, they're asking the questions we would want them to ask. They're making the applicant do the analysis that we want to make them do as far as it comes to groundwater. When it comes to traffic, the town of Cortland's consultant is Frederick P. Clark. We had asked for, this was a big issue at the end of last year of which consultant. I sent it to three consultants, Clark, Adler, and Collins. I got no response from Mazur. I received a sixty-five hundred dollar.
That's Collins.
From from uh six thousand fifty dollar response from Adler and a fifteen hundred dollar response from Clark. And there was a dramatic difference in the cost, difference in the cost because Clark is Cortland's consultant. These costs were based off of one submission, you know, asking them to review it for Newcastle in light of traffic and groundwater. Because there's been another submission, this much, it, you know, I would imagine these quotes are double or close to double what they are, what we were given at the end of last year. So I'm looking for direction from you as to how to proceed with this.
Didn't we write a letter to Cortland asking them to require the applicant to pick up these fees for us?
We did. They wrote back to us and said, we are not the reviewing authority, we will not pick up the fees. In the email communication that Jill sent, our copies of the transmission to the town in response to our comments, we had, you know, several comments that we were concerned about. They answered every one of those comments. There's additional information that was sent to me by the town of Cortland. You know, they they.
Who is the reviewing authority if not Cortland?
No, they're saying the town of Newcastle is not reviewing authority.
Cortland does.
It's not.
Right, and the applicant is currently doing analysis for Cortland.
It's not very neighborly.
Right, so it's that's that's.
Considering it's going through our town.
Let's, let's.
Well, they 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 have.
When do we have that board as Cortland?
They have um, the applicant has responded that the traffic will not be coming from Newcastle. You know, so so there, they provide the routes that they feel their traffic will come from, the numbers, the origin, des- origin, destination information. You know, we don't have a transportation engineer on staff, so we look to a consultant to help us interpret that, is that true? And so that's what I think we need if we wanna be assured that it's not going to impact our roadways.
I'm sorry, can you rewind for just a second? What are you looking for from us?
Isn't it, can I think what?
I'm looking, one, I have advised you that traffic impacts could be an impact to the town.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah.
That was based off of an analysis done by Cortland's traffic engineer saying the bigger impact will be felt by Newcastle. When I asked him, what does that mean? He said, because of where you sit and we haven't received all the information from the applicant yet for Cortland so that he can fully vet that statement. It was kind of a, hey, shout out, be on the lookout for this. We just received info, so at that time, I updated the board as to where we were with it. There was interest in this board regarding the two areas, groundwater and traffic, to obtain consultants to review the application. And that we had to ask Cortland whether or not they would pay for our expensive consultants. For groundwater, it it we, it's the same, for both consultants, they're consultants that the town has used in the past. For groundwater, we have used this consultant and he said to me, I'm not gonna give you a proposal. Ask Cortland if they can share their data, their information with you, you know, and I'll review it for the both of you. It's the same information, groundwater is more static. When it comes to transportation, you have origin, destination, you have populations. They said they were using shuttle buses from the train station down in Thornton. So there's a little bit more mechanics regarding transportation and how our roads are impacted.
Sorry, you're looking for approval to move forward with the consultant?
With one of two consultants, correct.
Okay, do we have their proposal?
Yes, Jill, I emailed them to you.
Well, we don't know what the new number, what the exact number we're approving is because you just, they just got a new.
I emailed them to know.
Turned back to each other.
No, 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 but I thought you just said.
I I got, I, at the moment that I sent Jill the email to you, I had heard, I got a new submission.
They got a new.
Right, so so I can go out and get new proposals based on the new information. But I wanted to share with you the difference right now, right.
And what, explain to me again, in this honor, if it's Nick or Sabrina question, assuming that we're unhappy.
Unhappy with what?
We see the traffic's gonna be horrible. We we we're stuck, we're just, hey, please, consider this?
Yes. Consider this.
And is that great and good, that great and good all is well?
Well, we could ask them to take in, you know, repay routes for us, they can, we can ask them now.
And they can say, no.
Well, you would ask, right, you could, right, I mean, you could go and testify at the hearings, explain your consultant's findings, ask them if we're to accept those findings and that they require mitigation conditions. If it could be established to that board's satisfaction, that those are conditions that need to be mitigated from that project.
And that that would be borne upon the applicant.
That would be borne on the applicant, right.
Well, let's let's hold off, you'll get even more information. I'd like, I think Hollis should also weigh in, this is something that's been, uh she's followed more closely than all of us, I think. I mean, I don't speak for Ivy, but uh she knew a lot.
She's been following it, she's been following it.
No, but this, when we talked about last time, none of us really, none of us knew what was going on there.
Till, till Saturday.
She did. I don't know if we're pointing.
I raised an issue about the, you were part of that.
No, you don't have a number for us.
I raised an issue about the, I'm gonna raise an issue about the one on the upper.
I was talking about last time it was raised.
Yes.
She definitely knew most about it.
Okay, so you know what, um let's, we'll, we'll forward everything to Hollis, we'll see what the new submission is and we will.
I thought it was a gym.
Was from the consultants.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're, where are they in the application process in Cortland?
It's, it's gone to public hearing yet.
Have we just? Okay, just make sure of right that that timing works. Guys, we have time, we have.
We don't have that much time, but we have time.
But we have another week.
You have at least another week.
Okay, sure. All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sabrina.
All righty, you're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes.
We have a militia, we can line up on the border and be like, charge!
We've got muskets.
I've got muskets ready.
I think we want to come with a new plan.
You wanna start at the beginning, we want, we wanna ask our, uh guess, what, uh they're here for something particular.
Well, they're here, I think they're here for the tree bank legislation probably. We can do tree bank legislation next.
Tree bank? We'll do, okay, so um, so um, we have been um very interested in some revisions to our tree bank um legislation. Steve Coleman has given, provided us with a very rough draft. If you notice in my comments, the ERB, um will first be seeing this on February twenty-sixth, so this was just a sneak peek to the board. Um he, um Steve did write a little bit of a cover memo for the board, just highlighting um some of the um key spots, key topics on of what would be, what are covered um in the direct toes amendments.
Nice, yeah.
I I didn't, I didn't, I don't understand the need to go from twelve to eight.
You know what?
And and just from my experience, when I was the prosecutor, it wasn't as if there were so many violations that people got prosecuted for. And then the other issue that I I thought was one that needed to be addressed is there were people who would take trees down because they said they were a hazard, right? And I don't, I believe my recollection serves me right, what was defined, hazard was, hazardous was defined in the statute, but it was pretty vague definition, the hazard was true. The poses structural defect or one's location or position poses a receivable danger to person or property, that's pretty liberal. That's very liberal. So the change in language is now to add the requirement that before that tree is taken, where someone can say, if my sentence is correct, I'm taking it down, they have to have an arborist or the town come and say, okay.
It says may require.
Yeah, so it was right, so so should we try to define that better, Nick? Like what, because anyone, you know, you could have this gorgeous beautiful, I have a neighbor that had a beautiful tree. Um and I would just call it a tree because I'm ignorant as to types of trees. But um he took it down and, he took it down and it was, it was, you know, arguably, I guess it's a danger. One could argue it was twenty feet, fifteen feet from his house, it's a thirty-foot tall tree, but what defines it, that's a, is it just a healthy tree? What are the chances of that coming down? So you don't wanna see that happen and and that happened in my neighborhood. So I think we need to work on defining and clarifying what means hazardous, so people can't just fall back upon and say, well, it's ten feet, so therefore by default.
Right, it's foreseeable that's gonna damage property.
Yes, a little racist lacquered in there, it's meat for itself.
Have you guys been, have you guys been working on this?
Yes.
Because the num, I mean, like honestly, there are a lot of inconsistencies in here in terms of what the definitions are.
Oh, no, Nick, Nick, council has not been working on it, I think Steve, this is Steve's, this is a rough, this is a rough rap.
Oh, yes, correct.
Oh, okay.
This is the initial draft.
So why is this coming to us before it's going to the ERB and the conservation board?
It was, it was. Just because we were talking about streetscape and expanding the tree bank definitions was something that.
Right, so we can get access, because of the tree bank, we wanna be able to use it for more than just trees.
We could use the money for the tree bank for the streetscape.
And it's for, if we can tap into that potentially for other types of bushes and plant life.
It was, it was only to keep you apprised of where where we were and where where stuff was going.
So we're, so the goal of this is so that we can reroute the money from the tree bank.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 that's just a piece of it, that's just a piece of it. That was one of the issues about accessing dollars in the tree bank to be used for other things just than specifically a tree.
But she, you ask, you ask why we're getting a sneak peek.
It could be a shrub.
Or should be.
The reason we're getting a sneak peek is because it's applicable to the streetscape.
The streetscape. Otherwise, it wouldn't be before.
That's a certain reason we're getting the street, the sneak peek.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, when I, when I see, when I see the changes and I I, now I understand why,
Otherwise, it wouldn't be before you.
It's very preliminary.
If we're trying to think about being able to use some of the money for the the plantings related to the streetscape, but when I see the changes that are proposed here, I do have some concerns that being able to use the money for things like beautification um doesn't seem consistent with the objectives of the tree ordinance.
No, it's it's trees, it's trees for the streetscape, it's not beautification, it's trees for the streetscape.
So. It would be trees for the streetscape?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, trees and shrubs.
Trees.
We're putting in, we're putting in, we're putting in like forty trees.
Yeah, but we wanted it, we. We we, I think it's one of them.
Yeah.
But we we always wanted to be able to, not always. It has been raised for quite a while now about how the the tree bank itself was a little bit too um narrow in its definition, that there were circumstances where things other than a a strict tree would have been preferred, shrubs, ornamental plantings, um some other landscaping that would have enhanced the situation, but because the definition was limited to trees, that was the only thing that could be planted there. And so I know that that it has certainly been a discussion of uh with the town board and with Steve Coleman regarding the fact that that there should have been an expansion of the definition. Um I have been moving Steve along um to to uh try to to move the legislation and expand the definition because we're now talking about a streetscape. And so the question is whether or not um shrubs, um landscaping in general, things like that are in the keeping of the.
Okay, but that's different from using it for trees, right? I mean, from my, but but when you read the objectives of the ordinance. They, you know, talk about things like, you know, all of the environmental benefits of trees, right? I'm quickly gonna get out of my depth about what those are, but anyway, um, but, you know. Some things may qualify and meet those objectives, but other things won't, so things like landscaping.
Well, not hardscaping, that's not what we're talking about, the point is that if we wanna put in a shrub versus a tree, we're not allowed to do that.
What's that?
Right, the way it's currently written, so we wanted to be able to expand that to give a little more, um, variability of things we can put in. Which are still, you know, in this, in the basically same gestalt of the whole tree, but it's not talking about hardscape like putting in. You know, paths and bricks and pavers, things like that, it's just talking about.
Rikers.
Rikers.
Yeah.
Maybe it makes more sense to put in a bush in some place as opposed to a tree, which it may be better, you know, screening, it may be, there may be other reasons for that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but.
Native plantation.
But we say tree bank funds include installation of irrigation systems to support plantings, for design, tree inventory, tree boxes and soil amendments.
Hmm?
Okay. Let's see.
It'll, it'll all be, these are proposed, the ERB is gonna weigh in on it, I was just giving the board a sneak peek because one of the things that's on our agenda for tonight. Is talking about the street, streetscape and our possibility of expanding the scope to put back some of the sections that we eliminated earlier on, so.
I think, I, obviously speaking just for myself, but I I, the the, the idea here is, as has been repeated, that it's not for the, what we call the hardscaping, the the pavers and things like that, but. Whether it's soil irrigation, that is still relevant to the health of whatever you're going to plant there. So, I I don't think it's so removed or divorced from the physical tree or the physical bush that you should not be allowed to do that, because ultimately making up, if you needed to have some sort of irrigation. And you have to come out of pocket separately for that, it's, I don't know if the right term is silly, but there there needs to be a nexus, and there is a nexus.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think it gives us, it certainly doesn't give us the ability to put, to to move Horace Greeley with the tree bank fund. You know, um, you know, it's 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 limited in its its scope. Um, you know, my concern wasn't so much that, my concern was, you know, if we're gonna be going over this. Just from my experience that I've dealt with, what what does hazardous mean, um, why are we going from twelve to eight?
Right, right. Yeah, the definition is.
You know, why why we go from twelve to eight, it, what's the basis and reason behind that? So just, those are my types of questions, but I personally do not object to being able to access those dollars for. Plant life in various forms and then the necessities to care for it.
But just to play devil's advocate, I mean, first of all, I would leave it to the ERB to, to go over this, cuz I don't have the expertise.
Right, I agree.
Exactly.
But I would, to to your point really.
Okay.
The part that strikes me about using the tree fund is that if we're already. And I'm in favor of using the money, don't get me wrong, because, you know, then we could spend the other money for sidewalks and things like that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But the point is though, the tree bank, I mean technically if somebody's taking down trees and they don't have the space to plant new trees. They contribute money to the tree bank, we all know that, but the goal is that the tree bank money is ultimately used to plant trees elsewhere. That they couldn't plant on their own property. If we're already planning to plant these trees in downtown, in in downtown, then we're not really.
Yes, we're not adding to the.
Promoting that goal, we're just using the money.
Subtotal of trees, yeah.
Right, exactly, right, we're not, there's no, there's no net gain of trees.
Well, yeah.
It's just taking money from one pot, we're basically, we're discouraging with the goal of the tree bank, so I'm agreeing with Ivy.
Yeah.
Um, that's not to say we wanna use the money, but we're not, we're not increasing the number of trees.
No, but but but. But we are.
We're increasing the trees.
And yeah, but also the town.
But no, but you're really putting a tree in anyway.
We might be doing it anyway, we might be doing it anyway.
No, we, but when.
But but any, any use of a tree fund has to be approved by the town board. So any project, wherever the, you know, said, even if it said benches in here, the town board still has to approve that at the end of the day.
I understand, but we still, we're adding excellent trees anyway.
I know, but I'm not.
That's a health problem. I asked for it when we were on the board, because I don't recall that, how often have we accessed the tree fund dollars in the past?
For public, you mean through public?
Yeah, or even, well, I don't think people have put into it because.
We've, I've never in the four years I've been here.
I don't recall.
Yeah, I think that that was one of the problems that Steve felt that.
So, so. Yeah, it's great and good that the money is there, but let's let's use it, this is a great use, whether it's a net gain or stays the same or what's gonna happen anyway or.
Why don't we try to use it?
We don't have an added number of trees.
Why don't we try to plant additional trees in? If we're gonna use it, it's not doing us any good sitting in the bank, why don't we plant more trees in Genny or something like that?
Well, whose responsibility is it to identify how we use the funds?
Well, it's our decision, it comes to us, but no one's.
How do you?
It's just children at the town board, right?
Well, but it comes to us, but but shouldn't, shouldn't the ERB then, or the conservation board, I don't know whose responsibility it would be, but shouldn't somebody have the.
Yeah, maybe.
Responsibility of identifying additional ways to.
We have, we have a lot of lots that we've taken over and rem that sometimes we have to mow, maybe we should plant some trees in, maybe we benefit the neighbors too.
Yeah.
Not just, you know.
We could create a committee, Rob.
We could use the committees we already have.
See tree, think fund.
Magnus, the Magnus, segues into the Magnus.
Magnus.
They're raising out.
There we go.
Oh my god, now you've started, now you've started him.
It's a Magnus.
Um, I'm I'm.
Okay, moving on.
So, we're gonna want, so this is gonna go to ERB for discussion.
Let your book at it.
When are they, uh, when are they?
They're meeting on the twenty sixth, so we're not doing anything with this until we hear back from them and their comments and.
Right.
Um, Nick is gonna take in, work on a definition of hazardous tree.
I'm just saying, and I'll also go.
And why, why Steve thinks twelve back, twelve things, I thought we went made to tw, I thought we went up before, no, we went back down, right.
After, after the ERB sees it, um, I would like to bring Stephen to talk to the board about his suggestions and discuss it all.
I would like, after, after the ERB, yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
Okay, cuz ERB may come up with that too.
I would be curious if you know, uh.
Yep.
Did you want to say something?
So, just a few points, um, just one for historical clarification, even before I joined the conservation board. Uh, this pre-ordinance was the product of both ERB and the conservation board working together. So if there's any way, as you're discussing this and it's going back to the ERB, if we could just make sure that you're thinking in terms of both boards. That the ERB and the conservation board would weigh in on if we're gonna make any amendments. Um, so I wanted to put that out there very importantly and clearly to the point that were made. As a, as the chair of the conservation board, I mean, really, we have not done anything with this ordinance in terms of ever having opportunities to think about what projects. Where the trees would go, um, the question of Genny, I mean, these are great thoughts. Um, in terms of where around town we could be putting the plantings. Um, also, I I wind up being the tree magnet person whom people come to, I have people calling me that their neighbor has clear cut trees. Um, whether it's, you know, over a course of years, you know, sometimes they kind of weave in and out of the tree ordinance by only doing a few trees a year. Um, as it's written in the tree ordinance, it says, you know, you can't cut a certain number of trees down a year. But if we track a certain property, you can get to twenty trees over a course of years.
But there's certain sizes, they should be getting permits regardless.
True.
Even if it's, whether it's one or or thirty.
Right, but are we keeping track of, you know, twenty seven Bridges Road, what have they done over the course of years as opposed to just looking at per year?
If if they, you mean if if they've actually gotten a permit.
Right, and are they in compliance, if, you know, look, if there's a lot in here, that if we're.
Do you keep track of the owners?
Say that again?
Oh, as opposed to property, perhaps?
That's, that's a good, so, yeah, yeah, Jill asking a question, you know, to keep track of the owners.
Yeah.
Does it run with the land?
Right, I don't know if we do that, and that's what I mean, um.
Then I mean, that's, you know.
It is an interesting thing to see how many trees someone is taking down, if they've actually reported it, the other interesting question frankly, is who, how many are actually reporting it?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah. Right, and I think there's a lot we don't know, and there's a lot that's not being tracked and, um, and there's a lot of opportunity, even in some of the edits there for people to have better notice. Uh, beforehand, often people just hear when the chainsaws come and then it's too late. Um, so I think there's a nice opportunity here to really look at how this, this can be made to have more impact. Um, and, you know, one thing that I hear from neighbors is they wish the tree bank would help almost put, in other words, let's say there's an adjacent property to mine and. All these trees have come down, maybe some of the tree bank money could be used to put trees on my own property, you know, like right at that.
Only that's a problem, right, you can't use the, because.
So that's a problem.
Yeah.
But I'm just putting it out there as of what, in other words, if this area, if this block has lost all these trees.
Sure.
And it's literally changed the character, the environment, the quality of air, all of that, and yet we're putting some trees, you know, across town. It just raises the question to be thoughtful, and I don't know the private property implications and all of that, but it would behoove us to kind of public.
Think about that perhaps.
Um, and the other thing is, just so you know, a little behind the scenes in terms of some of the conversations that we have with the ERB and the conservation board. When we considered not just having exclusively trees as part of the replanting, when we looked at shrubs, it was very narrowly considered. And the rationale was that because you plant trees, there's sometimes not enough room to put in eight trees. But you can put four trees and some significantly big shrubs that have environmental impact also for the understory. So we know the deer are destroying all the understory, and this way they have, you know, we could put some shrubs in, have nice, um, you know, barrier, coverage, et cetera. Be good for the environment, and so we really thought very carefully, and obviously I, we haven't proposed anything formal yet. But thinking about in what specific instances might a shrub be appropriate under the tree ordinance? So the slippery slope of this, as I'm trying to, you know, understand everything that you're thinking here. Um, is you, it seems to be headed in a very different direction now. In other words, ornamental trees, which, and we, we haven't even really even talked about, are we talking about native trees, right, cuz native trees.
But we're, we're not for anything yet, we're just talking about every.
Right, and again, I'm just putting it out there, yeah.
Didn't even start the process really.
So environmentally positive, even in the downtown tree scape would be native, and so, when you're starting to talk about box plantings.
But yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah.
In other words, it's almost like a, a, you know, a continuum, trees, shrubs, planters, I I. Again, I'll be totally open as we consider this, but it's almost like planters was not necessarily meant to, you know what I mean?
No.
No, I don't think a plant are.
It's almost, it's an interesting.
Corinna plantings, I believe is what we were talking about.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting to think about this, but I just wanted to kind of put those thoughts out there, and I, it does say that there will be a hearing, which I think is wonderful, I think.
Right. Should not plant. Yeah, in the front office plantings, yeah.
You'll be surprised how many people may show up at this hearing, because there have been some folks who really, you know, they have thoughts about.
Victoria, we've all been around long enough, this time we are not surprised if people show up in the audience.
Right, you're welcome. But thank you for the opportunity to do the public hearing, because I think it will give folks a chance to weigh in on some of the edits that were made and maybe even some that haven't been thought of yet that might make it a better, a better, uh.
But certainly, and it's not gonna be on these edits, we want the boards to look at it first.
First, and then it'll be, yeah.
And then.
It's all purpose of setting it up, yes.
Which is why I got this, started to say rough, right, yeah, right, rough, sure.
Yeah, as you should, as you should.
A shame, okay, terrific.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Next thing.
Okay, so, um, can we start with the, at the top then, let's just, uh, let me go over things, okay.
Sure, Open Gov.
Uh, fiscal transparency portal, this is, uh, just a contract renewal for OpenGov.com, this is what.
I'm curious, do we, what does it actually do that we, I've been understanding what it is, what is the software. Provide for us that we couldn't do without the software? You know that it can happen without the software, we couldn't live in the house?
Um, we.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's the visualizations that you're paying for, primarily.
Absolutely.
I am just curious, I just don't know what you mean.
Yeah, no, that's actually what it is, so your ability to take in, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Your, your ability to take the, um, the hard numbers out of the budget and take and put them into, uh, different, uh, pie charts.
And then it just makes the charts.
Right, because the.
Well, it takes.
If we don't approve this hollow, we'll actually come to you.
No, no, it takes, if you go, no, if you, if you go to the website, it actually takes you to their website.
Go to your portal.
Basically, Rob Dearie has the pop, I mean, when we first got this, I don't remember what it was, but he spent a lot of time putting in the, the numbers.
Pre-populating, yeah.
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 Now it doesn't take as much, cuz now it just does, you know, the current year, but the point is though that you're giving them the numbers, and then you're using, it's their platform.
And we're just uploading our search.
Yeah.
It's their platform, but if you click on it, you're, you're going over to their platform, which which is populated with our numbers.
I I actually would be really interested in understanding whether we are using the full functionality of the module that we've purchased.
I suppose.
And, yeah.
He's actually a booster child for it, they, um, they've been approaching him as a, as a, you know, as a, like a testimonial, because we use.
I was just trying to watch him.
Yeah.
We should charge them for said testimony.
Yeah, I think we're using it a lot, I think he loves it.
Yeah.
He loves it.
Yeah, well, both of it, but but the other thing I'd be, so I'm wondering, do we use it, yeah, I'm gonna talk to you tomorrow, so.
That may be true, well, we should get a benefit.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna take us with the thing, right? Yeah, so you should, um, you gotta talk about.
So I'm, I'm just curious if we're using everything that we could be using, that I'm also, you know, they have a whole, I clicked on the website too, they have a whole suite of products, and I'm sort of curious whether there are additional things that we could.
Yeah, absolutely, ask away.
That is so not my thing.
But you know.
Like charts and that's, that's Hollis though, but I guess yours is well, like.
Okay, this, but this is all great.
No, but that's good, because the charts are.
Okay, so do you have any problem with, um, renewing the, um, the contracts?
The, the truth is the charts are much better than reading the, well, the chart.
No, yeah, yes, it just makes, it's a huge.
You have to picture.
Oh, hundred percent, I mean, I love the charts, but I'm not, it just doesn't fascinate me like it does.
Rob, do you wanna, um, so this is the memo of agreement with the Chapala Millwood Com, Chamber of Commerce regarding the, um, uh, bases?
Well, honestly, I don't remember what happened then, I, this is what I remember.
She has table.
I remember they, I remember they approached us.
Yes, and we, we just sponsor them.
Though I know Ted's been off, cuz he's a treasurer, they, they approached us if we could sponsor that. Faces thing.
Yep, event.
And then there was some emails with that, and we're not gonna remember. As far as that we're on, we can't sponsor any specific business, we can't promote any business, what you can do is promote, um.
Under the town, we're used to promote the, uh, the shopping areas, the entertainment, the social activities in the town, we've done that in the past also.
Right, right, so it was, it was.
Right.
And it was okay to do.
Yes.
And then they did it.
Yeah, and.
And then they submitted a bill, and then apparently we never had a resolution approving it or something.
Oh, so this really is for twenty seventeen?
Yes, for twenty seventeen, and we had money in the budget.
Yes, yeah.
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 I'm really glad, cuz I was so confused why we're gonna do the same thing again in twenty eighteen.
Never. But we had money, we had money in our ten thousand dollar line, which was for, you know, like, community events or whatever it was.
Right. But it's just, yeah, terrible, yeah.
But we never, I don't think we ever had a resolution, so then when it came time to pay it, Rob Dearie said there's never a resolution.
Yeah. We realized that we didn't have a re- resolution, and the, that's our problem.
Well, we already have an agreement, and they've already done it, I think we should fulfill it.
Yeah.
But they, they keeps on emailing me when we get the check and, and the reason we never got the check and because.
That's what we realized, we, we could sign the resolution.
Cuz we're.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there was, we never dotted all the i's and crossed the t's.
Okay, so this will be on for next time for approval, okay.
Okay.
Uh, next is, let's see, uh, police vehicles, let's find out a little.
Downtown was pretty cheap.
Oh gosh, okay, sorry, I, I jumped, and I really did, I jumped.
Police vehicle auction soon? Auctioning soon, any auction?
Yes, we'll see, we'll, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna auction, like, as soon as we deserve a, we'll auction, yeah.
Hollis, I'm sure you wanna go back there.
Yes. All right, ready, so, page.
All right.
Okay. So. When we originally got the, um, construction estimate for the project. Um, from WSP, as you guys know, um, ten million dollars was our estimate, when the bids came in, they came back, came in significantly higher. We then sat down with, uh, Boswell Engineering, who helped us go through and identify eleven areas on the project that we could take and basically, um. It's a, we're gonna take it. Um, that we could basically go through and pare down the project. Right.
Look at Mac, Mac.
You know you should just ignore him, right?
You are a pro.
I help it.
He is.
He's tremendously awesome.
This guy's unbelievable.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Mac.
What, um, what I'd like to do with the board tonight is I'd like to take and review the eleven areas for a sense of priorities. But, um, I spoke to John Haswick about how we. At what point would I need to talk to him about putting sections back in? Um, we, um, we don't have. We don't have a lot that's, um, out of contingency right now, there's a one point one million dollar contingency in the project. There's also a matter of this unclassified excavation, which is a million dollars that we haven't touched as well. Um, I'm hesitant to touch them because we're not far enough along with our excavation. We haven't finished the sanitary sewer, we haven't finished our drainage, so I'm hesitant to go any further. But what I did ask John is, um. At what point, or how.
I can answer your question, are you asking at what point do we have to take the steps now in case you want to in the future.
Thank you, that's exactly it.
Expend the money to complete the project, and do we need to get the curbing now and put it in place, even if we don't do anything?
See what happens to it? Right.
Right.
Yes.
Or do we have to rip up our streetscape later on to do it?
Exactly right, so what I'm gonna ask of the board is to take and put back in the granite curbing. That gives us the ability to.
To not damage what we've already done and that we wanna put it in at some point.
In addition to that, this section of Allen Place, that's in front of you, that's with the, the photograph.
I got ESPN right now.
Very. Or ESPN, depending.
That was a joke, it was a joke, I swear, it was intentional.
Um, so, the funny thing about this is, is that you can tell where the state stopped their sidewalk restoration?
I swear.
Half of the island, and they just stopped it.
Yeah.
So, um. Jerry Marshall and his travels downtown, looking at the dumpster, also identified for me this section over here that he would like to.
Yeah.
That for whatever inexplicable reason, WSP also left out of their plans.
It's a disaster, that area.
Isn't that part of the parking district?
Here it is, it really is.
Yes.
So shouldn't money be coming out of that?
How much money is in the parking district?
Right now, the parking district is still paying off the bond on the South Willy lot. I mean, we can figure out down the road, at this point, we're, we're paying the, um, granite curbing out of fund balance.
How, how much is it per?
Linear foot?
And I know we have these images, but how, is it, I don't, you quote, what you're down.
So the granite curbing type C is item number six oh nine dash zero two zero three. Originally, we had seven thousand seven hundred sixty linear feet for a total of four hundred and eleven thousand two eighty. Um, when we removed the eleven, uh, areas, we revised it down to six thousand one hundred twenty five.
Right.
Linear feet for three hundred and twenty four thousand.
It's a ninety thousand dollar difference.
Yeah. So, that's what I'd like to ask the board right now to consider putting back into the project.
Out of a million dollar plus contingency. Out of a million dollar plus contingency.
I'm sorry, and where is this? Where would we use it?
Okay, we would use it for restoring the granite curbing.
Everywhere.
Sorry.
In that picture.
Here.
Yeah.
And everywhere else, we had planned on putting in sidewalks, but we removed.
So, for example, here.
Oh, hallway.
North Greeley.
Town, Tabaritown Hall.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And up.
Up towards um.
Bishop.
All the way, okay.
By the trip, by, yeah, by uh.
On to.
Amidst Court, going right up the street, North Really, up to Bishop.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um all the areas, I mean, we can go through them.
Of King, going.
Of King. Yeah, yeah, no, I know all the streets, yeah.
Going side areas, just.
Okay, so I I'd like to take and put it back in, ninety thousand dollars, that allows us to take and pave our roads, the the granite curbing is in place.
So let's just do it, yeah, after ninety thousand dollars.
Worst case scenario, we we are not in a position to put all the sidewalks back, that's fine, we backfill with topsoil and seed it, we've got grass or mulch or, it's fine, people can still walk on it. But we have the opportunity to then do the sidewalks in phases, if that's this.
Okay, so so six months from now, we're much further along to come this summer, we still are sitting on a million dollar contingency, we've had our major structural issues are out of the way, we can then revisit.
Those aspects.
We start.
We can then start redoing the sidewalk.
We can revisit, eventually.
We got the, we ordered the curbing, so we're set in that.
Yes. The the curbing is done, and the longest, I'm sorry, the longest lead time is the granite curbing, so that's why we need to make the decision now.
Does.
Right.
Does ordering the curbing also, is that is that only the materials, or is it the labor associated with the installation as well?
For the ninety thousand.
Good question.
Right, um.
I don't think.
You know, I I. There um there isn't a separate line item for the installation of the curbing, I think it's all part of what ELQ is charging us, and and the subcontractor is charging ELQ to take and install.
But one would think that if now they have to do more, they're gonna charge more.
Um.
But yeah, and Darius is doing work right now.
They're trying to get any of that. Right, replacing batteries with granite.
No, so they would, they would, they, so in other words, whatever, if we if we weren't to install the granite curbing out here, we would take and repave what's what's out in front of Town Hall, and just leave that curbing there.
We, meaning they, wouldn't be doing it.
Yes, I'm sorry, the 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 project would not.
Um. So it's a simple, I guess it's a simple question, we find out.
Yes.
What, and if so, what's the cost?
Yeah, um.
Right, if it's not included, we're certain people.
But yeah, I mean, you know, we're we're not, we're not paying for additional labor when the guys are are.
But if they're gonna re, they're gonna redo it anyway, but not the curbing, the curbing was gonna stay, you just said.
We just confirm.
But the ninety thousand may include the installation. It may.
Right, we just have to confirm that today, that's.
But I will find out when they bring installation, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so that's that.
Um, we didn't. The twinkleinger, um. The um, the eleven areas, can we have, can we look at them and just give me some sort of indication as to what the the town's priorities would be?
By the time, I can speak.
We're not making a decision, just.
So we're not, no, 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 right?
Page thirty two.
No, we're just giving you some.
Yeah.
My my personal view, and I don't know what you wanna is, but my personal view is two two spots, one, for the sake of consistency, the Citibank Dunkin' Donuts location, because my understanding is that it would have been different.
Right.
Before the this change, and then the other one would be, in my opinion, out here by the library and the town, because it's a gateway and it's a library.
In front of Town Hall.
Yeah, it's very typical area.
So.
Do do we have any sense, was any of, I mean, did, do we ever get public opinion on this?
There was some people, there was people who voiced concern about when we removed some stuff, but I I think we should listen to folks, but nothing's happening now anyway, these are just, we're just discussing.
The only, the only, the only area that people voiced concern was north, was North Greeley, and now we favor definitely putting back sidewalks, I mean.
I just was, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Bishop.
North Greeley, yeah.
Everybody talked about one sidewalks, everyone sidewalks.
Anybody, anywhere we can put back side, put in sidewalks, we should, you know, so.
Yeah, and 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 I think, when I spoke to Joe, we sort of discussed it on Friday, for example, when you're looking at area three, which is on page thirty two, which is in front of Town Hall, like there's this nice little seating area, and a little circular patio, we don't need all of that. So that at a hundred ninety thousand dollars, you could probably deduct some of that, because most important, as Rob just said, uh the mayor's correct, we want, we want sidewalk, excuse me.
Well, and this was also taking out, was this also taking out the slip lane that's here?
Um well, that's roadway work, so um.
No, 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 no. We didn't make any changes there.
I think we did.
But the 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 thing about that Citibank area here, that already looks really nice.
The slip lane.
No, I think you. The slip lane right here, we were gonna.
Which 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 page you're looking at?
I'm not, I'm.
Well, actually, it would be there, so page, it's a page slip lane right here.
Well, that's great, you're right, more than.
Or it's the one, the slip lane, I'll be clear.
It's a. Yeah.
I think, you know what, it's what's interesting is that they left the, they left.
That's right.
They didn't highlight something, cause it's not a square.
Right. Um.
Yeah, there's a slip lane that we didn't get rid of.
Yeah, we did do stuff, but that was it, right?
He, right, um.
But we need a, no, we want to put in the slip lane.
No, we have one, we have a slip lane, we wanted to get rid of it, and make it, make it more former.
No, we have one, we wanted to get rid of it, so the only thing is, is that they actually left in when when, I'll have them take a look at this again, again, these are all um approximations.
But the um the hard, this, the actual roadway work remained. So they were just taking out the 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 veterans, I am curious as to how they would agree.
We didn't get rid of the slip lane.
We were going to get, if we did this, we're going to get rid of it, right?
I don't think. We were going to, but I don't think we did, I think we cut it out.
Well, right, when we did this, but we would put it all back in, so like doing this is, so the only question I've got is this three seventy, does it include getting rid of that little dog leg or whatever it is that creates the strip,
Right. Right.
uh the the slip lane and um the crosswalks.
Yep.
The thing is, I don't know.
Right, like should those actually going to the middle of the crosswalk?
I I maybe disagree with Jeremy, I'm not sure, but the Citibank pocket park, we had it in there at one point, we took it out, but I personally don't think we should put that back in.
Right, so.
No, I'm not referring, I'm not referring to the pocket park, no, I'm referring to.
I don't either.
So um so, okay, so this is sort of interesting, so Marion Place is is staying, because it was only done a couple of years ago.
This was not gonna be done, right?
Right, but we were planning on doing all of the the um sidewalk around here, mm-hmm.
I think we have permission from the owner of the building to do the works with the sidewalks.
Um the other thing is, is I've got um, I actually have a proposal in front.
Now all gets done, okay.
Um, one of the things that that we're gonna do is, we we have one of our first change orders is um.
I think that's what, I think that's what it is.
That's a good question, because it doesn't include that.
We're gonna need some additional surveying work throughout town, we know this from um the one twenty sidewalk um that we just redid up at Grafflin. Um New York State DOT has become very stringent in its ADA compliance, and Landy is having, Landy is our um our subcontractor, Han Engineering. Um was the overseer and the the engineering company that designed the sidewalk up there, and they're in the midst of fighting with New York State DOT as to whether or not the, they did enough to try to make the grade compliant. Um I haven't really, I I'm I'm watching this from a distance as a cautionary tale, and um we are bringing, we are bringing in the New York State DOT ADA compliance officer to come walk downtown with us, because there's no way that our slopes meet ADA compliance, um obviously, we will, we will try to.
So what are you doing? I I what are you, what's in spots, you can, you can, you can, you can.
Well, that's, they need to sign off on every non-compliant curb and stoop that we put in.
So, but what's default, if they don't sign off on it, you.
Regrade the town?
Yeah, what do you mean, what, what?
They they make, they make you rip it up and do it again, and so there's there's certain accommodations that we are required to make. So in order for us to meet this new stringent ADA standards, we need additional survey work downtown.
But haven't they already approved?
Then then at what point, at what point can you say, is there, if it is a defense.
They did approve, they also approved the uh the one one twenty, and we have, they're still fighting with them about it.
To the state, so it's a, this is, you can't, it's it's not economically feasible, or it's not economically irrational thing, it's either we fix it and get it as good as we can, and I, this not sounds disrespectful, but we can't spend a ludicrous amount of dollars on the hell that's.
Right, but 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 the question, the question is, what is as good as is reasonable, and who's making that determination?
Yeah, it's right.
And because we're on a state road, New York State DOT ADA compliance officer is now making that determination.
The same one who wanted a roundabout? Um.
So, well, well, I'm 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 it, I'm going to be circulating it to the board, I only got it today, it's um a ten thousand three hundred eighty six dollar change order, it's for additional work from ELQ to take and um shoot additional uh grades for ADA compliance, so um in addition to that, it also includes um fixing the drainage along the side of Pizza Station. Um with our intent that we um are gonna have to do some additional drainage work in this area when we put back the uh sidewalks, because there is a change in grade there.
Does Boswell think that number is appropriate?
And right? Uh yes, and actually, there's gonna be some additional um change order from Boswell as well.
Rob, 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 you're a good point, uh we were just just a moment ago, this two, well, indirectly, but this two ten.
Yes.
This two indirectly.
This two hundred ten thousand dollars, does that include the pocket park, because I certainly, and I think Rob and I are agree with this, the pocket park is not what I was referencing, on page thirty three.
Right, no, I started looking at it.
Hundred and five, so if that two hundred ten thousand dollars, I hope will come down, because.
Right.
Oh, yes, it should.
It's not the pocket park, it's just.
Yeah, I would not hope so.
Okay.
Yeah, fine.
It's just the grading and the drainage are, it's just the sidewalks on there.
Right, so it it's um, it's it's putting, it's uh redoing the sidewalks in front.
Right, right, okay.
Um leaving Marion Place the way it is, but uh alongside of Pizza Station, there is gonna be a a sitting wall there, because of the change in elevation, so there's something that you have to be able to put there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um so um.
This, so the change order is ELQ is gonna bring in the ADA, they're gonna.
There, this is for survey work, and then we um we have invited um Boswell, ELQ, Bob Cioli, and the New York State DOT ADA compliance officer to literally come and walk the town with us. And to take a look at the sketch, the additional sketches that are going to be produced by Boswell as a result of these ELQ things, to make sure that the streets, remember when we had problems with the street scape originally when WSP did them, and they had to redo them again, because they, you know, they were not ADA compliant, to take and do it again, because New York State DOT is now ratcheting it up another couple of levels with ADA compliance.
Well, he walks the town, start him at Town Hall going up. Don't don't let him start at Walgreens coming down.
Yeah. Yeah, got it.
But is it DOT going, what's that about?
But it's ridiculous, even if, what are they gonna say, you have a hill, right, what are we supposed to do?
Right, yeah, yeah.
I I this, this is the same problem we have on one twenty coming out of Grafflin, and they're saying that that um Han Engineering, you know, did not put in a gentle enough slope.
So.
So they should have, he should have.
So what are you, you raise the town?
So what's a consequence, what's happening, so what's a consequence for them, the engineering, we're gonna put in a proper.
They're gonna, if they can't get the approval, then they're gonna have to rip it up.
Okay.
Right, maybe at the cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not our, this is not our change order, we do, however, Bob Cioli has included in here, which I might as well go right into, um another, yeah, change order. This is for the one twenty sidewalk, so um. The one twenty sidewalk is approximately, it it's in two phases, they're both about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars apiece. Um we got a contribution from Con Ed of two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars to partner with us on it, because um it was cheaper for them to put the gas paint in under our sidewalk than it was for them to put it in the road. Um but as a result of our accommodations to Con Ed is saying, we ended up with a ten thousand dollar change order from Han Engineering. Changes to the engineering plans that we had to make to accommodate Con Ed.
We're getting two, huh?
I will be, yeah, we are getting two hundred twenty seven thousand dollars from them, but I will be going back to them with this ten thousand dollars, plus whatever other charges we end up incurring from Con Ed as a result of their dilatory actions, et cetera, et cetera, the.
And we always have the ability to have issues with certain poles, not that we'd ever use that as a mean to extract anything, but just to make sure that our town is safe.
Yes. Exactly, correct, so we we will, yes, so um.
So for who's everyone's work today?
Yeah, it 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 certainly does, and what we are hoping for is either a contribution, you know, from Con Ed uh for the change work order um that Bob Cioli is presenting, because these were direct charges that were a result of their project. Um perhaps we, in in lieu of payment for this, we would maybe take uh some payment towards paving sections of uh one twenty that perhaps we weren't going up that far, but perhaps when they did their gas project, they ripped up our streets a little bit further than we were planning on going, they could take and help us restore those.
What is their responsibility to fix the road, for example, if they have to go in and fix a pipe?
Mm-hmm.
Now that it's set under what will be redone sidewalks, for example, they they have to maintain them to their, to what they, the the same materials, the same style?
Yeah, they need, they need to restore, I I could tell you the one twenty sidewalk, there, they ripped up a section of that.
It's not just sticking in concrete.
They literally ripped up what, yes, they did.
No.
Yes, they did.
And then, and and it's not, it's not, it's not patchwork, they're going to have to actually.
Yes, they. No, they they most certainly will.
Because we're angry, or they, because they have to?
No, because they 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 will, they will, yeah, they will restore.
Both.
Definitely angry.
Can, can, can you?
Do you call it, what, what's the word, do you call it, excuse me, sir?
No, 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 what is it?
I I am so beyond excuse me, sir, I was.
Exactly.
Go to respect.
Go to your respect.
Don't do respect.
Alright, could, can you imagine the the complete incompetency? They just put the gas paint in, you, they didn't think to ask anyone along that stretch, hey, you wanna collect a gas while we're here?
Do you want me to turn off the recording before you do?
No, it's okay. So anyway, um on the phase two of the one twenty sidewalk, we will be uh requiring Con Ed to contact each one of the property owners.
Before.
Before we um do the sidewalk, to require them to put in a conduit, whether or not the house has current gas, so that if they do opt for gas later on, they will not rip up our side.
Well, God bless those homeowners, it's a great deal for them.
Lucky.
Yeah, it's great, they also have to coordinate with the school, which we had that issue with.
Yeah.
Is that called padding too?
Yeah.
Seriously. I want that part of that.
I'm pretty bothered.
He um. Uh what's that thing with the mission, um PS, we actually asked New York State DOT to give uh Con Ed a a break and allow them to start the one twenty sidewalk project early, and New York State said, DOT said absolutely not, we have a problem with the way uh Con Ed's been, you know, maintaining our roads. I was like, really? We never had that problem.
Wow.
PS, Con Ed is coming back on Thursday to once again try to level out South Greeley Avenue.
Well, the problem is they patched it, but the patch is not holding.
It's right, well, that's what happens in this weather.
Yes.
Because that's just, and then people, you know, people, they had the sweet sweeper coming, actually, I think it was today or yesterday.
Oh, it's same.
Yeah.
Um.
Yes, yeah.
Yesterday.
But um, the fact is, it looks like it's, it's never been done sometimes, because the gravel keeps on coming up.
Today? Yeah, yeah, I know.
From the uh patcher.
Could you take it quick, what what's the status of of the poll work that they've been doing?
The double polls, they're.
Yeah.
My understanding is, is that they don't do any non-emergency work, they're not committed to any non-emergency work over the winter, so they, yes, so they they supposedly will be back in force March April.
Over the winter, okay.
Okay, that's fair.
So we'll follow up in March, okay.
And by the way, just if you drive down one seventeen by like Bedford Hills, down to like, you know, towards Mount Tista. It'd make, it'd make you feel a little better about our roads, because Con Ed did a job on their roads too over there. So it's not just, it's not just.
No, it's fair.
No, 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 I I know, but you know what? Okay, so um let me see, uh police, let's see, so this change work order is going to be on for next uh town board meeting, um.
Coming off my sugar high. I'm trying to lose it.
Ah, vehicle purchase, um, okay, we have a request from the chief, it's already been budgeted for um a mark twenty eighteen police utility interceptor, and unlocked one.
Yeah, price.
I don't.
Okay.
Uh ex- contract extension of our highway maintenance materials for next year, clove, right, okay, uh change work order, we did, uh sustainability advisory uh board bylaws, they wanted to re
To increase the members.
Increase the number of members and reduce the terms for five years to two years.
Yeah, they're trying to get more people to.
Active, yeah.
And then we're requiring change to your town code, because it's in the code.
Okay, so um I'll ask council to take and prepare that, so we can put it on our upcoming agenda.
Yeah, Bedford uh has eighty members, I learned at the last meeting.
I said two million.
Ooh, good luck with that, I'm running a meeting.
Not, not the men, not the, not the Bedford uh.
Alright, just tie it up.
If they don't talk all at once, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, they probably have, like, if their meetings are probably more like uh.
The town board meeting.
As a, like, in an assembly room, or like, a lot of people.
Yeah, I guess so, uh next is uh authorization to accept uh water main. Traditionally spelled M A I N. Just to see if anyone's paying attention, okay, that's good.
Spell check, maybe not spell check.
But they work, you know, it's a work, so it's.
That's why, that's why spell check.
Absolutely, um okay, go over the road, um so we, if the board remembers, uh the residents on the road have dedicated whatever interest they had in the water main to the town, and the town will be maintaining it from this point forward, so we're gonna have a formal resolution. Um adopting it. Um we just have some um administrative items, uh some conferences um for the police, for Sabrina, um there will be a couple of resolutions that we have right after this.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Do we as a town have an out-of-town travel policy, or an out-of-state travel policy? I just, you know, having worked for New York State for two and a half years, I can tell you that um almost no one ever travels out of state.
This is unusual, I I have to be honest with you, I don't know of anybody, any other organization that has um out-of-state travel, other than Sabrina's.
The police is too.
I'm try at least, the police team.
The police team?
It's Jersey.
Yeah, that, other than, in the United States, right?
Yeah, and local. Yeah, I just, I I'm, you know, I know of commissioners of agencies in New York State who were not allowed to travel outside of the state, um so it just struck me as somewhat unusual to uh to see this. Um, so it just struck me as somewhat unusual to uh to see this.
You brush mouth and then I'm not traveling.
Yeah, because.
For in New Jersey.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not to New Jersey, it's it's, you know, some of these longer, you know, conference attendances out of state.
Yeah, right.
Um, you know, just the um the requirements involved in in submitting a request to travel outside of state
Mm-hmm.
are really expensive and there's a really high bar to demonstrate why it's necessary. Um, and to demonstrate that you've used every possible um avenue to reduce the costs of such a trip.
Hmm.
Um, so, you know, I just on on Sabrina's conference attendance, and it doesn't have anything to do with Sabrina, but, you know,
No, 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 understood.
Four days at two hundred fifty dollars a night in a hotel, that, you know, exceeds the GSA rate, government rates for hotels pretty significantly, right, and so just like, stuff like this, it just seems to me that the town ought to have a policy in place and a procedure that um
We'll talk to her later about it.
that governs. I, it's not, you know, I don't wanna stop this, but I I think moving forward with this with us, um if we were ever to, if anyone were ever to ask questions about this, I think it's sort of not consistent with what I've seen um in state and in local government.
Do you want to, you know, you need to sound a little.
And we just do.
Well, check with lands, I don't. I was gonna say though, as I said, like the town supervisor conference in South Beach this year was.
Talking.
I'm excited with that. Today. Right.
It's a case by case.
Just just fire up statement then.
Okay, um, okay, so next gonna check and see what's here, um, okay, let's see, um.
It was funny, I just was speaking to a former colleague of mine, and she said that some prosecutors in Manhattan were sent to Malaysia to train prosecutors for two weeks in Malaysia. I just like, on, I I assume the state dime or somewhere, the county dime.
Yeah.
But you're right, that's very atypical.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the rest of the administrative items, authorization to uh pay job related educational expenses, our street opening permits, the downed request, children's book festival. Alright.
Wait, they're waiting advance?
Um.
It's all right.
Yeah, uh, here in our lifetime, um, any questions on the authorization to waive the tax penalty? Uh, and payment claims. Okay, and we, and five resolutions, okay, five resolutions.
So we have five.
Two resolutions.
Yeah.
This would be funny in here. Sure, I move to appoint Anthony Charley to the position of police detective
Come inside.
with the town of Newcastle Police Department and annual salary of one hundred eighteen thousand six hundred eighty one dollars.
What's your call?
This appointment date will be February seventh, twenty eighteen, and is continued upon probationary period of no more than fifty-two weeks.
Second. Yeah, we do.
All favor.
Aye.
For your.
Uh, I move to authorize a sergeant with the Newcastle Police Department to attend the Region Two Child Passenger Safety Technical Conference on March nineteenth to twenty first, twenty eighteen, being held in Long Branch, New Jersey, the total cost for registration, lodging, meals and miscellaneous expenses is approximately three hundred dollars, which will be reimbursed by the New York State Child Passenger Safety Grant.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
I don't know if on beer or just.
It's all you take us home.
Okay, I uh move to retroactively raise Ernest Eddings hourly rate from fourteen dollars to fifteen dollars, retroactive effective January first, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All favor, aye.
I move to appoint Claudia Moulas to the Architectural Review Board for a three-year term effective February seventh, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
And I move to approve payment of claims in the amount of one million three hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, twenty seventeen expenditures totaling one million one thirty-three ninety and sixteen cents, and twenty eighteen expenditures totaling two hundred forty-three thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and three cents. This is on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail reports, all dated February second, twenty eighteen, and checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye. Oh, so we listen.
Okay.
Is that it?
Anything else, Joe?
I think that's it, do we have it all? Unbelievable.
We have four ten o'clock.
Okay.
Alright.
I think we wanted, we were gonna go back into executive session, but.
Yeah.
No, I, yeah.
What was it on the agenda, we can't, do we have to vote?
No. No, you wanna make motion for personnel, right? Uh.
Well, potential litigation, I think.
Okay.
I move to go back in executive session for advice of council.
And go to, um, pencil litigation.
Second, uh, second, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.